Good morning. I'd like to call our Neale County Regular Council meeting to order. Please, I'm just a short reminder that we are being recorded live. I would like to bring note to welcome Reeve Whitstock through live streaming for us, and as such, therefore, I will be taking the chair. We also would like to welcome to our table our interim C A O, Peter Turniski. And did I say your name right, Peter? Correct me. Karnowski, sorry. And so with that, I'd like to bring our attention to the agenda, and will anyone need anything added to the agenda? Okay, motion for adoption. Counselor King.
My move that we adopt the agenda as presented for the January 8, 2019 meeting.
We had our minutes circulated. Is there, oh, excuse, excuse me. So let's put that to vote. Everyone, Counselor King, go. Thanks. Let's take a look at our minutes. Any comments, concerns? Mr. Christie?
I'll move the minutes be adopted as presented.
Call the vote. All in favor? Okay, we have a delegation at 8:40, so we have a few minutes to look at 6.1. Oh, excuse me, I skipped one. 5.3, our planning.
Good morning, Deputy Reeve, members of council. I'm bringing to you a request for subdivision extension. Application K N E 160120 is a subdivision application for approximately 3.75 acres to be subdivided out of 159 acre parcel on the northwest of 9, 34, 24, west of 4. The applicants are requesting an extension to meet the conditions of their subdivision approval. The applicants anticipate they will be able to meet the outstanding conditions in the spring, summer of 2019. A typical extension is granted for one year. The applicants have requested until August 1, 2019, eight months. This is the second extension to be requested on this parcel. All other conditions as outlined in the subdivision approval have been completed. The original approval was granted on December 15, 2016. Landowners are given a year from the date of approval in which to meet the conditions of approval. If the conditions are met, the subdivision approving authority is required to endorse the subdivision to allow registration of land titles. Section 657, subsection 4.6 of the M G A permits council to extend the one-year approval period whether or not that period has expired. Landowners or their agents may make requests for an extension of the timeframes from council. Requests for extensions to subdivision approvals can only be issued by the council of the approving authority. The applicants need to move an existing shed which currently straddles the newly proposed property line. Condition 2 requires a survey showing improvements to ensure the setbacks to all property lines are satisfied. It must therefore reflect the change as prescribed in condition 4. All other conditions have been met, and the endorsement fee and extension fee have both been paid. So recommended action is that council move to grant an eight-month extension to K N E 160120 until August 15, 2019.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments on our options? Counselor King?
Just a clarification, Barb. The only thing that they have left to do is move that shed.
Correct. The R P R is part of your package as well, so you can see where it's infringing across the line.
I'd move then that we grant K N E 160120 an eight-month extension until August 15, 2019.
Any further comments? So we'll vote on the motion to grant an eight-month extension until August 15 of 2019. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Now we'll work on 6.1. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Deputy Reeve and the members of council, and happy new year. Bylaw 1782 for borrowing to finance operating expenditures is the request for decision. The last borrowing to finance operating expenditures was bylaw 1756 and was approved in 2018. Under section 251 of the Municipal Government Act, all borrowing must be done through bylaw. In section 256 of the Municipal Government Act outlines the requirements to borrow for operating purposes. In this case, it's short term. Now, the preliminary cash forecast or budget does not reflect the need to access the short-term operating credit in 2019, so we haven't planned to particularly need it. However, should there be unforeseen timing of transfers or events, and the timing of expenditures to be paid becomes intense prior to taxes being collected in October, the county will be able to access this credit for short-term purposes only without delay. The county has not needed to access this credit anytime after 2008, so that's since I've been here. So again, we haven't anticipated to need it, so therefore, we anticipate no interest to be required or to be paid. Communications is one-way communications, primarily with the Service Credit Union. And again, it's a financial link to our strategic plan, and the bylaw 1782 is attached for information, and there hasn't been any changes essentially, except for some dates, and just up-to-date with that, and the amount of the budget that's required for operating. It's a requirement in the bylaw, and other than that, it's the same basic terms of the bylaw as the previous year. And the recommended action would to give all three readings this morning to that bylaw. And I'll leave it with you.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel. Mr. Whitstock?
I would move first reading to bylaw 1782.
Counselor King?
Just a clarification, Mike. You said that the dates have been adjusted, and in s- You said that the dates have been adjusted and in section one, it refers to the calendar year 2018. Should that be 2019?
Yes, it should. Yes, it should. Thank you. Good catch, Counselor. Yes, that's correct. 2019. Thank you.
Counselor King?
That would be an amendment required to the bylaw. Thank you.
Okay, so then my question would be is Reeve Whitstock, if you want to amend your motion to recognize the bylaw as amended?
Yes, I could. I've been looking here and I can't find any reference to 2018 on mine, so maybe I've got a different one here. Mine shows 2019. But regardless of with the amendment, move first reading with the amendment to bylaw 1782.
Thank you. Call the vote. All in agreement? Carried. Counselor King?
Okay, I would make the motion that we give second reading to bylaw 1782 as amended.
All in favor? Carried.
I'll make a motion to that we consider to alter reading to be given to bylaw.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. Counselor Keever?
I move we...
Counselor Keever moved third reading be given to bylaw 1782. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. I see we have our delegation arriving. Is that correct? Great. So we will jump back up to 3.1 and have B D O take the front there and get set up.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Happy new year. Thanks for having us this morning.
One minute later, we tried our best.
Oh, you were perfect because we were not...
It was a perfect timing?
Yes, you were. We needed the one minute, so we were even.
Oh, good.
We're gold. Thank you.
So everybody's got the planning letter. I see it's up front there in the package. So it's good.
So if I could get you to introduce yourselves, please? And I think you know all of us, so we'll just go with your introductions just for the record and then carry on.
Awesome. My name is Alan Lester. I'm a partner with B D O. We're the auditors for the county.
I am Ryan Wachter. I'm senior manager with B D O. We're going to talk about the audit today.
Awesome.
So it looks like they gave me control this year, which was...
Scary.
A little scary, but so I'm going to move it on screen and I think you have it in your package as well, so follow along a bit there. So I'll flip you in. We'll go right past the table of contents and just kind of to the executive summary. So these are kind of the things we're going to talk about today. We're going to talk about the timing of your audit. We're going to talk about some of the significant audit risks that we've identified. We're going to talk about materiality. I'll explain what that is in a little bit. Some of the engagement objectives and some discussions around fraud. So I'll jump right in and we'll start with the timeline. So we do the audit in two phases. The first one, we come out and we do some interim testing, which we've already done. We are here kind of at the end of November there. And then we're going to come back out in early spring here. We're aiming for March 20th to be out here to do our final audit work. So the reason we do it in two phases is when we come out in the fall there, we come out and we look at the controls of the county, what kind of processes are in place. We get an understanding of how financial information is being reported. Even though we've done the audit for a few years, we come out and we always want to reconfirm and we want to recheck that all that, those controls and processes are being followed and everything kind of passes at that end. Then we'll come back on March 20th, do our final audit field work there. And we're hoping to have that all wrapped up and some draft financials off to your management team by April 8th. And then you will see our lovely faces. I don't know if they're lovely, but you'll see our faces on hopefully April 23rd to present our audited financial statements to you. So as part of that April 23rd meeting, we'll have the financial statements for you and we'll have any other kind of significant communication. You'll get another letter kind of similar to this with anything we think needs to be brought to your attention. So our audit is a risk-based approach in that we're looking for areas where we could have some kind of misstatement, some kind of error. So the two biggest and significant risks area lie in the recognition of revenue and management's overriding controls. So I'll go through the revenue recognition first. So as part of kind of auditing standards, there's always an inherent risk that grant revenue is recorded in the wrong period. There's a lot of terms related to grants. There's a lot of recognition issues surrounding that. So as part of our audit, we design very specific tests to make sure that that type of revenue is recorded correctly. And that test includes, you know, we make sure that the county's following the proper policy set out by the accounting standards boards. We review all the controls and processes that your management team and you have put in place to make sure that these are being reported in the right period. And then we also do some sample testing. So we don't look at every single grant. That we'd be here for a long time if we always looked at every transaction, but we do look at a large sample of them to make sure they're being recorded properly. The other kind of significant risk in the audit is what we call management overriding controls. So management is always in a unique position that they potentially have the ability to override some controls just because they usually tend to be kind of that final check anyway, so if they wanted to, they have that potential. So in order to kind of mitigate that and take that concern off the table, we do some specific testing around testing the controls and the processes to make sure it never has been circumvented or that we could find. And we also have some very sophisticated software, which if you're having trouble sleeping at night, I'll explain it to you, but that allows us to actually look at any manual journal entries that have occurred in the year, which is how this risk would happen in that they're posting these manual entries. We can pull them all out and we have the ability to look at all of them and to go and find support if anything is odd and unusual. So those are kind of our two main audit risks that we...
So just to clarify, those are very common across the board for municipalities or audits in particular. It's almost, we actually have to take those as high risks specifically in the revenue section. It's just one of those standards. And these aren't the only risks in the file. These are just sort of the significant ones that we're talking about, so just so you know.
So like I said, we do use a risk approach and we have developed a bunch of different testing to make sure that those get addressed during your audit. So materiality, we've brought up materiality before. Does anybody not know what materiality is? I'll give it a quick rundown, maybe as a refresher. So materiality is, it's a level that we set where if you were reading the financial statements, you wouldn't change your opinion if there was errors less than that. But if there was an error more than our materiality, you would change how you read those statements. You would make a different decision. So we've set materiality based on 2% of revenue, which means the materiality for our audit is 624,000. Now, that doesn't mean that we only care about errors or omissions or misstatements over that. We care about them in aggregate, so we add them all up and kind of see where they come to and see if it would have an impact on your view of the statements. The theory behind it is if we had an error of, say, 200,000 and it wasn't, you know, it was missed or it just wasn't adjusted for, and you were looking at this financial statement, you would still make the same decision. It just wasn't large enough that it's going to cause you to make a totally different decision based on that. So we've set that mark at 624,000. Last year's audit was approximately 620,000 as well. So there hasn't been a significant change in that number.
So in materiality as well, it's, like I said, it's a guideline for us to make this or to look at financials, see if they're misstated, materially misstated. It's also depending on the type of errors too, right? So if there's an error that's less than that, that would have an impact on decisions, we would also look at that as well, right? Do either adjust it or have a look at the statements itself. Now, you also, if we do have an error, you will see those in the unadjusted errors at the end of the... We have a report for that as well. So it's something that you guys would see as well. Like a common one, for example, I always give is cutoff errors. Like if you received, the audit's been finalized, the trial balance been finalized, but payable of $20,000 was there that wasn't recorded at the end of the year. You know, that's not significant enough to change decisions, therefore, it's not adjusted and it's recorded in the next period. Those type of things, right? So it's definitely a tool that we use, but it's not a finite, it's not a line in the sand, I guess, right?
Mr. Whitstock, did you catch that?
Yeah, I've been listening to the whole thing. Sounds great.
I just wanted to be sure...
Oh, by the way, hi, Alan. Hi, Ryan.
Hi.
Just wanted to be sure that mic was working for you. Thanks.
All right, so I will go through the appendices a little bit to just add a little bit of insight to you as to how we do the audit. So this is our audit strategy. I'm not going to go through it line by line. I just want to note that table on the left. So we do our audit in six phases. The very first three are scoping, assessing risks, and designing our audit response. That's what we came out in November and did. So that means we looked at all the risks that are there for the county and we've designed an approach to make sure that we're addressing those and that we're addressing proper auditing techniques so we can make sure we're looking at enough information. The last three are obtaining our audit evidence. We're going to come to an opinion and a report. The obtaining audit evidence, that's what we're going to do when we come in March. And we're going to come and look at all the supporting documents that make those financial statements. Forming an opinion is, as it says, we're going to hopefully find nothing or if we're going to find something, we're going to come to an opinion. And then the report is what we present to you at the end of April there. So we're kind of about midway through the audit already. Confirming that we're independent. The last appendix, it just kind of goes through everybody's responsibilities. So I'll run through them fairly quick here. So our responsibility as auditors is to provide that opinion on your financial statements that what the financial position, the performance, and the cash flows of the county are. That work will include working with your management to make sure you guys get your financial statements by April 23rd. If there are control deficiencies that are significant, making sure that we bring those up and we identify those. And if there are significant findings, we make sure that we present that to council when we come at that final meeting or if, I guess, they're pressing, we would tell you earlier, like today. But there isn't any that we have today. The last slide kind of just goes over that lovely fraud and how we try to detect fraud during the audit. There's a lot of writing up there, but in a nutshell, we do our best to look out for it, but we're not specifically searching that out.
It's part of our audit procedures as it always is. If we ever did detect fraud, it would change how we approach things and we communicate that to you. At this point, we haven't seen any and we just confirming with you guys that you haven't seen anything either as well, so.
That'll be our one question to council before we let you ask us questions if you have detected or heard of any fraudulent activities.
Not to my knowledge, counsel.
That's what we're hoping for.
That's right.
So that's kind of our letter on the audit. I think the big takeaways are that, yeah, we are halfway there and you will be seeing us again. But does anybody have any questions on the letter, the audit, any of the work that we do?
Look at that. We feel confident.
Nice.
It's good to hear.
Madam Chair, just in the interest of ensuring council recognizes the auditors work for council, they don't work for administration. If there is something that you wish to raise with the auditors that you wish not to introduce in front of administration, we can leave the room for a minute.
Thank you. Any need for it, councilors? Thanks, Peter. We're all good.
Well, thank you for your time then.
Make it easy on us this morning. That's great.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate the time you take.
We'll see you again.
We will see you in the springtime when it's a little warmer outside, hopefully.
Yes.
We hope.
We hope.
Yes.
I was going to call him. That's right. Thank you. So we will take a 10-minute break. We're all looking like we're ready to roll, so let's get back to business. We are moving down our agenda nicely to 7.1. And we are calling Mike Morton to present, please. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you Deputy Reeve. Bylaw 1781 is the master rates bylaw. At December 11th, 2018, regular council meeting, council did not vote unanimously to hold third reading of bylaw 1781. The meeting procedures by law 1768, Part 7, Bylaws, Section 46, Sub 1, Sub-Subsection F. Basic requirements, all proposed bylaws shall not be given more than two readings at one meeting, unless councillors present at the meeting unanimously agree to a motion authorizing third reading. The direction to administration was to bring this bylaw 1781 to the January 8th, 2019 meeting to consider third reading. The December 4th Committee of the Whole Recommendation, this is just the history in the background, Council Whitstock, actually it should be, but this is how it was italicized. Council Whitstock made a recommendation to administration to bring back the master rates bylaw to the December 11th, 2018 council meeting, indicating large volume charges of $9 per cube to only bulk water users, end quote. This change means that risers or hookups to a county water line will only pay $3.50, or $2 for those two particular hamlets, per cubic meter for whatever volume is consumed. Those two hamlets being Wimbourn and Huxley. In summary, the regular service connection and risers, the Huxley and Wimbourn, as I just stated, would be $2 per cubic meter. All other water systems would be $3.50 per cubic meter. And the $50 bimonthly flat fee would still apply to all current and future service connections. For bulk water stations however, the 0 to 50 cubic meters monthly would remain at $5 per cubic meter. With the $50 per cubic meter monthly, on the amount only above 50 cubic meters in excess would be charged at $9 per cubic meter. So, in a sense, the bulk water stations were going to be left intact, as per the previous bylaw. The one change that has come forth through administration and planning were the electrical permit fees. So, in review of it, and it was just kind of come up sort of right before Christmas, we had done a comparison with adjacent municipalities, and discovered that we are significantly higher, grossly higher on contractor electrical permits, once they exceed the $200,000 threshold in materials and labor. So in order to be competitive and more consistently with neighbors, I think it's incentive, rather important that we believe our rate needs to be revised to reflect the competition. The changes that have been revised in this master rates bylaw and proposed as $5 per additional thousand, in additional installation cost above the $20,000, as opposed to the current 10sor, which is where the comparatives are largely based, in around that $5 range. And a new Class 1, and just on the technical note as well, a new Class 1 development permit for portable storage containers has also been added in the bylaw. And it's, those changes are reflected as well. So again, this comes back to the overall net impact revenue from the 2019 interim budget draft is approximately 212,000. And this is a public notification for sure. What's decided today will definitely be communicated. This is a link to, it's a financial link, and it deals with competitiveness from that perspective. And the attachment is bylaw 1781, as well as the electrical permit fees with a couple neighboring municipalities. So, I'm going to leave that in council's hands now, and I think that concludes what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you Mike. Council, do you have any questions for Mike? Council King.
I'd make the motion that council give third reading to master rates bylaw 1781 as presented.
Any discussion needed?
I'm still torn with the idea of not having a different rate for the high-volume water users. I, you know, I mean, we have a higher rate for bulk, at the bulk stations. I'm not so sure that the higher water users shouldn't be, you know, I mean, at that same rate. I know that we have a problem in Torrington with the trailer court being billed as one, and so they always end up being over the amount. If that is going to continue to be a problem, I would suggest that every one of those trailers in Torrington have its own water meter. That would get around that problem there. So that just leaves us with the Linden Nursing Home, which I guess we'd have to work out some way, shape, or form. But I really feel that the water line was put in for residential use, and anybody going over that amount should be paying something more for the water. It's going to help down the road in fixing the lines, which we know is going to happen. We can't stay just at that one little rate.
Council? Mr. Christie?
There we go. I agree somewhat with Glenn. I believe that we need to have more conversation on the higher volume users, on the risers. I think that we need to bring it back, I think, to strat planning and really discuss it thoroughly, but in the, for this year, I think maybe go through with this bylaw, and then take a hard look at it for next year, and decide in the trailer court and nursing home, what the best approach would be. That's kind of where I'm at, and I still feel I'm somewhat in the dark of where the bulk water's going to, whether it's two or three high-volume users, or the hundreds that are over, I don't know.
Council King?
I think I'm going to come down kind of on the same side as Wade is. Just in terms, I think that we need to have more conversation as a council, not just about those big water users, but where we are in our thinking in terms of the amount, percentage of cost recovery maybe that we ultimately want to end up at some point in the future. And somehow determining or defining the actual cost in our own minds to, does that big user really, is it required that we charge them more, or not? And I think that's a long discussion that maybe is not at this point in time one that we want to have, but I think we need to have. And so, I think that's probably an appropriate place, maybe at our strat planning in February, to have some conversation around water, where we want to be in the future with water, how we're going to continue to fund water, what percentage of that needs to be paid by the actual user, what percentage is it reasonable to ask the taxpayers to subsidize? So, I'd like to see us approve the existing bylaw as it's presented today. And then I think we need to have more conversation going forward.
Council Penner, did you have something to add?
I just agree 100%, and we've mentioned this before in meetings, that we need to bring this back to our strats, to get some more detail. Today, I would like to see it passed.
Mr. Hugo?
I agree with Mr. Christie, Mr. King, and Mrs. Penner. We do have to bring it back to strat, we can have a longer discussion on where we want to be with water.
Thank you. Council King moved to give third reading to master rates bylaw 1781, that being a bylaw to establish rates, fees, and charges for various goods, licenses, permits, and services. All those in favor? Carried. Sorry. Opposed? Carried. Okay, let's go on with our agendas, 7.2, the council remuneration review.
I'll start this one off, Madam Chair, so earlier in the year, I believe it was in the, I was just canceled. Earlier in the year, I believe it was in August, staff brought forward a report that advised council that a change in the tax regime was coming. And what that included was that the one-third of an elected official's income that was treated as non-taxable would no longer be so, effective January 1, 2019. Council accepted that as information at the time. Through your budget deliberations, there has been more discussion. On December 4th, Councilor King made a proposal that council go to a simple flat rate per month for Reeve, Deputy Reeve, and councillors. That recommendation was not passed at the subsequent council meeting on December 11th. Councilor Christie moved to direct administration to check the competitiveness, or how Neill County salaries compare to that of others in the central region. This report brings that information. And this report also seeks to try to bring resolution to this question, given that we are already in 2019. What the report does is provide a spreadsheet that shows comparable salaries for for Big Horn, Starland, Paint Earth, Stettler, Wheatland, Pinoka, LaCombe, Clearwater, Mountain View, Red Deer, and Rocky View Counties. What you'll see in that spreadsheet is that there is a significant diversity in not only what, but also how councillors are compensated. We've used a widely accepted approach to compare salaries, particularly where there is a certain amount of of diversity in what and how councils get paid, by using a percentile grid. And the information in the report shows it both on a numeric and on a graphic basis. Some councils are compensated more so on a benefits basis. Others are compensated more so on a salary basis. One is compensated entirely on a salary basis, which in some respects makes comparison difficult. However, again, looking at it on a percentile basis kind of equalizes or nets it all out. Today, the county Reeve is compensated at about the 65th percentile, meaning greater than 65% of the comparatives. The Deputy Reeve and councillors are at about the 60th. Generally speaking, the 70th and 75th percentile may represent an appropriate targeted range for Neill County. Certainly, it's one that has been used informally for Neill County staff to ensure that salary ranges are competitive. More so than digging into the numbers, because the absolute numbers are really a result of, you know, a decision on, of, you know, a decision on whether or not salaries should be adjusted for the Canada Revenue Agency change, or whether they should be maintained competitive with other municipalities. I would encourage counsel to have some discussion first on whether or not they believe the adjustment for the change in the Canada Revenue Agency regime is warranted, and discuss whether or not efforts should be taken now to maintain competitiveness. Something that I would suggest that counselors consider is either the next election, or let's say if two counselors were buying Lotto Max tickets together. I think you'd like to ensure that the salary, or perhaps more broadly, the remuneration that's being offered to counselors is competitive, such that in each of those two divisions, you would attract at least a couple of strong counselors. Clearly, any adjustment in salary at this point in time in the economy is challenging. However, I would again encourage you to ask yourself two questions. Should we adjust for the change in the Canada Revenue Agency policy? And should we be maintaining competitiveness in our salaries with that of other similar municipalities? So in the report, it shows the current salary. It also shows the base pay salary that was recommended by Counselor King back on December fourth, and then in the matrix, it shows adjustments to the seventieth and to the seventy-fifth percentile, as well as adjustments from the current, based on the CRA change, as well as the seventieth and seventy-fifth percentile adjusted for the CRA change. Again, I think a general discussion is probably more valuable before diving into the numbers. The staff recommendation is to amend the salary to the seventieth percentile plus the adjustment for the CRA change.
Thank you. Discussion? Or questions to our CAO around his presentation? Well, let's look at the first question. Does anyone have comments on whether you feel it's appropriate to adjust according to the changes Revenue Canada has brought towards our salary? Reeve Whitstock.
Well, we just took a fourteen percent. That's depending on what tax level you're at, but if you're at the lowest tax level, we've taken a fourteen percent decrease in our pay because of federal legislation, so I'm thinking we should get, why are we dropping our pay? Because of their policies. I think we should bring our pay up, and I don't believe anyone sitting here is at that fourteen percent tax rate. I think we're closer to the twenty. There could be, there probably is a couple that are probably even over that. So I don't have an issue with taking it to the, I think it's, I don't have an issue with adjusting for the CRA rate at all. I think that's part of our job, and we get paid to do that job, and because of federal legislation, it's no reason for us to take a cut. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Counselor King.
Sure, I'll weigh in on this. I guess, you know, my original conversation that I, and the original motion I proposed was in consideration that we go to just a flat rate, and I've given a lot of thought to that, and basically, I think that the recognition is, is that when I looked at counselor compensation, each of us is doing different levels of amount of work, and each of us are being compensated differently based on the work that we're doing. So I'm in support of the fact that we continue to pay a base salary, that we pay the perdiems that we have been doing, but that we adjust them. We adjust them for the money that we're going to lose because of CRA, and certainly, I'm in favor of the comments that were made by Peter, our CAO, to recognize the fact that the work we're doing is valuable, and the compensation that we receive should recognize the value of that work. So I have no problem adjusting for the CRA, and I have no problem remaining competitive in terms of what we pay. And I think the reality is, is that if there's someone out there who feels that we're either overpaid or overcompensated for what we're doing, they haven't sat in this chair, and they don't recognize the work and the effort and the responsibility that comes as a result of sitting here. So I guess next election, they have a choice to either put us back in these chairs, or to put someone else in these chairs who's prepared to do what we're currently doing. So that's my comments at this point.
Thank you. Anyone else have something to share? Counselor Christie.
I was, I guess I've given this a lot of thought in the last couple of weeks. I believe we need some adjustment. I guess my gut feel was that we changed the base pay to reflect the tax changes, and we leave the perdiem at the three percent, or whatever the COLA is on the perdiems, but change the base salary. I'm not necessarily sure, on the fourteen point two five tax loss that we had, is that just on the third that's tax-free now, or is that fourteen point two five on the total salary?
Our CEO can answer that for us?
Yeah, Madam Chair, as I understand it, it's because of, because we don't believe that anyone is earning this income only, we did not use the fourteen point two five. To ensure equity, we used the twenty-one percent, and it was applied to both the base and the perdiem.
Does that answer your question?
Somewhat, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Hugo? Anything else?
Similar as Counselor Christie, I've given this a lot of thought. It's a little difficult to sit here and determine our own salaries when we do have other people working out in the county that can't determine their own salaries, and they have to take what CRA does to them. I do know our job is important, but it's a little difficult for me to sit here and go, yeah, I'm going to vote myself, you know, so that I can do whatever CRA to balance that out. There's a lot of people out there that can't do that, so I'm having a difficult time trying to figure out whether we should be able to do this ourselves. It's a tough question on this one.
Yes.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, elected officials are the only people affected by this CRA decision.
Counselor Penner, do you have anything to add or share?
Originally, I wanted it as a base, to make it easier for our staff when it came to salary, and deep down, I think during our term, we would eventually equal out on the committees and things, the perdiems. So originally, I was all for just one, a base, a base, but I fully understand everybody's thinking. I think, yes, we should, with the fourteen percent, we should not have to suffer because of that, and we want to make sure that if we choose not to sit here again, that there, we do put somebody in here, so we want to be competitive.
Thank you.
I would like to stay the way we are doing it. I think that's kind of the fair way, you know, I mean, when you actually attend a meeting, you actually get paid. I worry when we start making decisions that are tied to the Income Tax Act, you know, I mean, in agriculture, we do all our business according to the Income Tax Act. We're the only people in the world that do that. Why would we start doing that here?
So do I understand you correctly, you're for having the perdiem, but how about when it comes to the compensation for the changes in the Tax Act? What is your view on that?
The Tax Act is there whether we like it or not, you know, I mean, I don't know that by going to a flat rate system, whether we'll make any more money or to cover that tax rate increase. I'm perfectly fine with staying the way we are. We pick a base salary, and we run from there.
Okay. Any other comments based on everybody else's sharing? We need a motion then.
Yeah, I was just sitting here thinking, to give legitimacy to our discussion, we probably should have a motion on the floor, that we can then debate and/or choose to approve or defeat. So I guess in light of that, and I would then make a motion that counsel amend the salary to the seventieth percentile plus the adjustments for the CRA change.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, if I could direct the eye, that would be the lower row and the second from the left.
So you would have us at the Reeve seventy-one, two hundred seventy-one. Is that correct? Is that the one you're referring to?
That is correct. So if you could go on the distributed form, if you look in the adjusted CRA row, and you move to the second column, the seventieth percentile, that's the one I am referring to. So seventy-one, fifty-five, fifty-two would be the round numbers in that column.
Thanks for the clarity. Any discussion? Counselor Kiefer.
So that means we're going to, like, a straight base?
So just for clarification, Glenn, these numbers have been calculated based on an adjustment to the base salary and an adjustment to the perdiem. So what's going to happen is the, there'll be a twenty-one percent adjustment on the base salary, and there'll be a twenty-one percent adjustment on the perdiems. So you'll be paid the same as you are today, you'll get your base salary, plus for the meetings you attend, whether they're half or full day, you'll be paid a perdiem. And so this is a guesstimated, estimated calculation based on what's happened from, off the two thousand and seventeen reported incomes from counselors. Okay?
Does that make sense to everybody? Does anyone have any questions as how that works? So we're... Any comments to the motion? Great, so I will read the motion one more time. Counselor King moved to amend the salary to the seventieth percentile plus adjustment for CRA changes. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Madam Chair, after submitting this agenda, we recognize that we should also pursue an adjustment to the policy. So would counsel consider a motion that would have staff amend the council policy three dash nineteen per your decision?
So we need a motion to adjust the policy to reflect this motion? Who would like to make the motion, please?
Still moved.
Thank you, Counselor King. Does that make sense to anybody? Does anyone have a question about this motion? Okay, so now we're not voting on anything other than changing the policy, so the motion will read. Counselor King moved the council approve policy three nineteen as adjusted. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. We will take a short break. We will take a short break. We will call our meeting back in order, please, and we will look at our agenda item 8.1. Thank you, Peter, if you could lead us through it.
So Madam Chair, this is very much intermunicipal support, kind of a request from Wheatland County. They intend to bring to the Central Zone RMA meeting on February 1st a resolution, and they're looking to test Neale County's support for this resolution at the February 1st meeting. Rather than reading all the wherases, I'll go to the operative clause. So they're looking for the RMA to request the province of Alberta to update the Code of Practice for Compost Facilities to reflect at minimum the standards for composting facilities. So over the course of the past five years, there has been a review, but the belief of Wheatland County is that those standards should be better addressed based on the concerns of rural municipalities and the offsite impacts that compost facilities create.
Thank you. Any questions to our presenter? Jerry?
It's not a question, what I've got is a comment, and I believe we don't have... Well, okay, we have rules and regulations around composting. The biggest problem is, is our rules are superseded by provincial rules, and the province has rules, but they aren't being enforced. So what I'm, I'm fully in support of this resolution. I believe that we should be in support of this resolution, and therefore I'll make a motion that this council support Wheatland County as they present the updated, update of the Provincial Code of Practice and Compost Facilities Resolution at the February 1st, 2019 Central Zone RMA Meeting and the Spring Rural Municipalities of Alberta Convention in March of 2019. If there's rules out there, they should be enforcing those rules. Right now, the rules aren't being enforced. I think the rules are inadequate. The sooner we get this thing put to bed, the better because it is, it has affected us in the past, and it's not great. The results that we had were pretty poor, and when it, when this composting facility goes bad, it doesn't just go bad at the site, it goes bad for miles around. So we need some sort of rules around that, and we need some enforcement around that. So therefore, I'm willing to support this resolution.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, I'll call for a motion, for the vote on the motion 8.1. Reeve Woodstock moved to support Wheatland County as their present, as they presented their update of the Provincial Code of Practice for Compost Facilities Resolution at February 1st Central Zone RMA Meeting and Spring Rural Municipalities of Alberta Convention in March of 2019. All in favor? Carried.
Madam Chair, just as a supplemental, if members of council have not advised Carolyn of their intention to attend, please do so. It's on Friday, February 1st in Stettler.
Thank you. Okay, up to 8.2, and again, we'll have our CEO.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just departing a little bit from the norm, I understand that council meetings are on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, and Committee of the Holes are on one of the alternate weeks. We would like to bring forward for council's consideration the Horseshoe Canyon Master Plan. Boy, I hope I'm on the right item. For, for council's consideration prior to your strategic session, which is on the 18th to the 21st of February. The consultants are not available on Tuesday, the 5th, which is a designated COW meeting. So the recommendation from staff is that upon adjourning the council meeting on February 12th, that council convene perhaps a somewhat brief Committee of the Whole meeting to, to address this important matter.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor King?
Okay, just a point of clarification. I understood that when we struck the Parks Committee, so when we removed the Parks Committee from one of our committees, that the intent was that any Parks-related issues would come to a regular council meeting or a Committee of the Whole. So my understanding is, is that we could bring the draft Horseshoe Canyon Master Plan to the council meeting, that we don't necessarily have to have an additional meeting, that we could just expand the agenda for our council meeting and include it there. Now, I may be wrong, but that was my understanding of the conversation that we had when we removed the Parks Committee as part of, and then said we just include it in normal council business. So to me, I'd be in favor, if we have to have a COW meeting, let's have it. But I think it could be just on our regular council agenda for the February 12th meeting. So I may be wrong in that, but...
Madam Chair, just to respond to Counselor King, we debated this a little bit at staff, and I think it really has to do with taking advantage of the loosening of the rules of order in the Committee of the Whole, so that it could be more of a discussion rather than a typical council interaction where it leads to a specific decision. I think it would be premature to pursue a decision at this time. This is more a matter of providing an opportunity for council to ask question and make commentary, but not pursue an approval.
Thanks for the clarity. Any other comments or questions? Looking for a motion? Counselor King? Oh, sorry, Counselor Christie?
Oh, still move. It's moving there.
Any questions or clarity needed? Great. So the motion is that council approve a Committee of the Whole meeting date for Tuesday, February 12th, after the regular council meeting. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Again, point of clarification.
Yes.
We're still having Committee of the Whole on February the 5th as well, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions before I call the vote? Okay, I call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Hooray, we get to hear from Marseillou again. Item 8.3, Board and Committee Appointments.
Madam Chair, I think they're working me too hard. This is a bit of a housekeeping item, being very cautious to respect the in-camera nature of our discussions a couple of weeks ago. What this, what this RFD proposes is to add to policy 3.3, the list of committees on which members of council serve, the appointment of four members of council to sit on the Neale-Troshu Negotiating Committee. So the discussion has been that Reeve Woodstock, Deputy Reeve McGee, Counselor King, and Counselor Christie are members on that committee. And you'll see on page 88 that number 15, the Neale-Troshu Negotiating Committee has been added to this policy. So somewhat of a cleanup item, but acknowledging that council has another committee.
Thank you. Any questions regarding its presentation? Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Penner?
I'll move that policy 3-3, Board and Committee Appointments be approved as presented.
Thank you. Any comments? Call a question then, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, moving forward to committees' reports and council reports. We have the Committee of the Whole meeting notes from October 15th. Any thoughts or concerns around those minutes? Okay. And the Canadian Badlands? Any thoughts or questions around those? Great.
Move Counselor Committee Report.
Thank you, Reeve Woodstock. All those in favor? Opposed? We have our follow-up action list, and I think we have a chance to take a look at it. I noticed a small little thing here on item motion number 394, about halfway down your first page. I would like us to clarify that that is an MPC that we are making this motion at.
That's correct, Madam Chair, and we will continue to endeavor to find a second appropriate member for MPC. Nothing preventing from members of council encouraging members of the community to pursue an MPC appointment.
Any other thoughts or questions on the follow-up? Motion, please. Counselor King?
Aye, still move that we approve the follow-up action list.
Or receive it as information? All in favor? Carried. Moving quickly along here, we are now at item 12.1. We will be going into closed session. We need a motion for such. Counselor Christie? All those in favor? Carried.
Okay, well, I'll be signing off. Thanks again, and we'll catch up to you later this week.
I'll move that council return to open meeting.
We had a very good discussion. We have one item that we'll have our CEO discuss for record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I foolishly don't have the motion in front of me. See, I don't have my screen on. Very good. Let's just give that a moment. So this has to do with the intention of Neill County and the town of Troschu to jointly pursue an Alberta Community Partnership grant. We don't specifically know what matching portion the town and the county will make or will have to make, but in the absence of a second meeting in January, it'll be helpful to have this for the purposes of the grant application. And the recommendation is that council support a joint application with the town of Troschu for an Alberta Community Partnerships, or ACP, grant to fund mediated efforts toward concluding an ICF agreement with the town of Troschu being the managing partner of the grant.
Comments or questions? I'd like to receive a motion then. Councilor Christie? Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Karin Unams. Great. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you for a nice quick meeting again. We are closed, or sorry, adjourned.